Do we have one opposed?
No.
No.
Oh.
He voted no.
Okay.
There's a little lag, so if we may...
Alright, I got you, I got you. Okay, and any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion carried. Um, okay, pool updates. Sam Denton, you want to go to the update team?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so for session one of swimming lessons started this Monday. We had thirty-seven kids in all of the levels. So that averages out to about five to six kids in every level. So doing pretty good math-wise. Uh, average daily, daily attendance at the pools is right around mid to low twenties. It's also doing pretty good that way, especially with the recent rain. We're still doing pretty well, so we've been pretty busy. Uh, other than that, yeah, we're just enjoying the new diving board, so thank you city councils for that. And then, uh, I guess Lonnie and Dale aren't here, but I was gonna thank them for all the work that they did on the slide to get that up and going, because the kids have really enjoyed that as well. But, other than that, yeah, pool's been going well. We've been staying busy, staying, staying as cool as possible.
Because the water felt pretty cold. I mean, obviously, when it's that hot outside, it's usually quite a contrast.
Yeah, it's, it's actually not too bad right now, because I guess we've had a couple of warm days here where it's heated up, you back up from the rain, so...
That's cool.
Yeah.
What is the average dealing temp?
Uh, it's right around like seventy-five, I believe. Seventy-five, seventy-six.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not too bad, actually.
Well, you guys are doing a real good job up there. I haven't heard any complaints from anyone.
Awesome, thank you.
And I've been up there many times watching.
Sure.
And it seems like the liftores are doing a fantastic job.
Alright, thank you.
I want to thank you guys in detail on that.
Yes, absolutely.
For doing the way we are.
Alright, sounds good.
Anything you can think of that you'd like to see done differently?
You know, not at the moment, I guess, not. I, we had talked about looking into a new pool vacuum for a while there. Uh, we've been struggling with getting it running, and I guess we ended up replacing the hose, and that, I believe, and that, that got it going again, so, uh, so far, I guess, after we got that fixed, we got that handled, we, we're doing alright at the pool.
Does that just back right into the skimmers, or how, what, how do you vacuum?
So, it's, it's pretty much manual, like, we have to get it going, we run water through it ourselves, and then turn it on, get it going and everything, and then we're manually pushing the, uh, I don't know what you would technically call it, but it's kind of like a broom.
Yep.
Along the bottom of the floor. That picks it up and filters, comes through the filter, and then puts the water back out into the pool. So, we do have a couple of filters that we replace with every year, or, I guess, not every year, as needed, more or less. So, we change those filters out, and then there's also parts of the vacuum that we have to clean out.
So, it's got a separate pump, evidently, that you, you actually have to start a separate pump?
You have to prime it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And if we would get a newer vacuum, they wouldn't have to prime the pump all the time, but the way ours is set up, and it's a little bit older, that they have to prime it before it eches.
Hmm. Okay, you guys got anything else for him? Okay. Awesome, keep your comment.
Yes, thank you.
Be back.
Okay, number five, the public input.
Vicky Larson. Um, I have some public input. I've given you some handouts that are the bound ones. Two issues, save routes to school, and the second one is the FOIA request. Um, save routes to school, I was curious, I made some phone calls, asked an innocent question, and whoo! Um, before you approve any payments, you need to make sure that... They made some changes, I asked for change orders, they said they didn't have any. You'll see that discourse in that, in that thing. Um, the, um, problem is, is if you approve it, then it becomes, it will, you guys, the council and the city, are responsible for any corrections to that, that sidewalk situation. That water backing up, evidently, the height of the, the sidewalk was changed, it was an onsite adjustment. And I'm still working on getting a FOIA on that one. Um, Mr. Gall, um, was irritated, and he, um, sent me to his attorney. And I talked to the attorney, and, uh, the attorney, uh, wanted to play word games, and I did keep, uh, Mr. Nelson in the loop, um, to what, the questions I was asking and the, the responses I was getting. But like I said, be careful before you approve anything to close out that project. Um, like I said, the height was changed, the, it was my understanding, the sidewalk was beefed up to accept, um, traffic. It's an attractive hazard. We've got kids already that are on their bikes jumping that, small motorcycles or scooters would be using that for Evel Knievel practice, and in the wintertime, um, snowmobiles. And the other thing is, is that you constructively, because of that height, and because of the bottoming out on that top thing, um, you've constructively closed that last portion of the alley to those two houses, and you need to have hearings, et cetera. I've given the statutes that apply, that I could find and stuff, so before you do anything, like I said, don't wait, I would suggest waiting on any approval of closing that out, just to be on the safe side. The second is a FOIA issue, I was asking for freedom of information. Um, there was some, I didn't make part of the request clear. Um, I did an amended version. Um, I now have a, uh, a, a program name on that, and as you will see, the exorbitant pricing charged, um, there's also information on that. Um, the thing is, is that that can be done with reports. The reports, I've done screenshots of the reports of that particular program, there's also an email that I had with the folks that put the program out. So, um, sources, I tried to have all the sources that I used, so you can contact them if you have any questions, or you can contact me. And I will be reissuing a second request for the FOIA. So, I think that's everything. Oh, one last thing, on Anderson Street, there's some curb on the, the north side that has been, I would call it vandalized, it's been chipped out. Um, the upright part of the curb has been hammered out or chopped out. Um, that shouldn't be happening. It's right across from Lance Johnson's home, so, just so you guys are aware of it. Okay?
Okay. Other public input?
I would like to offer a response to point number two under FOIA. Um, the payroll program, or the time card program that we use, is a free-based program. And because it is a free-based program, we don't have to report capability. So what you see when you sign off on people's time cards is what we have. It is a, a way for everybody to be able to sign in and sign out, whether they're on their phone, on a computer. Uh, all of the employees use it, um, but the, uh, if we choose, we want to get report capability, it's twenty-five dollars, um, and I just stuck with the free program, it serves its purpose, so... And I did indicate that in a letter response to Vicky.
And as I included, I included FLSA, which is Fair Labor Standards Act, um, for report, um, handling reports and stuff, as it refers to, on payrolls, and it gives the standards on what they expect, um, employers to handle. So you have that in your documentation also.
Okay. Do we have other public input?
Uh, yeah. My name is Jessica Christensen, this is my husband Terry. Uh, we were at the last meeting, um, we live kind of at the end of the alley from where the new sidewalk is, and have been having water issues. Um, so I printed out some more pictures of the last rain, and then after the street department came and dug out the little divots in the alley. And so, I guess I was just curious as to if anything had been decided, um, if anything is gonna change with that, um, just because we no longer have access to our yard. Um, we can't plant grass there, we can't park there, it's just kind of a dead space in our yard, um, that every time it rains, a little bit or a lot, we, we have a puddle there. So, the, um, the, uh, little divots that the street guy came and dug out did help a little bit, but then that, um, reroutes the water from our property into the people across the alley, and so that kind of goes down, and they have basements. Um, and so, I just, I'm not really for sure, you know, with the rerouting of water and us receiving all of that, what is gonna go on for fixing that problem? So we can have access to our yard, and we can get it finished the way we want it to be finished. So, that's kind of just, I was just curious as to if anything had been decided, you guys had said you were gonna go and look at the, the situation with those two culverts that were put in there.
Well, we've, uh, some of us have gone down there and looked at that. The reason that that sidewalk is higher is because it has to be handicapped accessible, so you can only have a certain grade of slope on that sidewalk, so that people can push a wheelchair, per se, up and down that sidewalk. If it was lower, it would be very, very difficult. And it's, that's according to the code that we, that had to be put in to keep the sidewalk at that level. You put those little swales in there to help deliver that water the other way. Now, your house is sitting on a slab, and your siding is actually on the ground. The, the only thing I would, I've done a lot of building, the only thing I could suggest, take off a few area all the way around, put some kind of concrete board or something there, so that your dirt wouldn't be right up against the actual part of the house, and then you'd have to put some dirt and slope it away from the house, and that's, that's the only solution I have.
We had an engineer come.
We don't feel like that is a city.
Yeah, we had an engineer come, and he states those two culverts that were put in, it'd be like, we're getting, he determined it'd be like a teaspoon of water is what you were getting in your ground yard, now you're getting a gallon. So, that's a lot more water. And I'm trying to figure out who's gonna fix it, because I'm, and the next step, to get the report, to do an actual report that he wants me to do, is gonna cost me five grand. If I have to pay five grand, it's gonna come back on you guys. Because I ain't paying five grand, so it's gonna come back on you guys. I want it fixed. I want those culverts removed. You cannot move water into my yard. I want it moved, I want it moved fast, and I suggest you get those culverts plugged ASAP. Because the next step, I've already got attorney, where I'm not gonna slow down from here. I'm not screwing around with it. So it's the state I gotta go after, if it's the city I gotta go after. I have more water than I had before, and I'm not dealing with it. It's not my problem.
We shouldn't have to...
The whole thing is a screwed up mess. The whole thing over there, I understand ADA and all this stuff, but they could put channels in there, they could have ran the water into the park, they could have ran them into, you know, they could have leached the water off into the park, there's 500 million things they could have done, but they didn't want to spend the money. So instead, they wanted me to deal with the water. And I'm not gonna deal with it.
We have gone down there and looked, and water has come down there before you guys ever moved in.
But look at the alley pictures.
That's a natural flow. Excuse me, please, let me, let me just tell you.
Okay.
That's a natural flow, the water comes down off that hill right into that area. You can tell where water has sat in there for years, against all those buildings in behind you. It isn't just happened in the last few months. This has been water coming down there forever. We're doing everything we can to move the water away, and it has really helped. And the only thing I can suggest is that you put some dirt around there and slope it away from your house.
At whose cost?
Well, we, it isn't, why would that be our cost?
You look at those pictures, like the guy says, there's two lines going straight down the alley, where those culverts are, straight down the alley, boom, right in my house. It's a, it's a simple...
Well, the, the culvert on the, on the west side would not come to your property.
Look at the pictures, there's two traces right down there.
There's one on the east side also, and that's the one that is causing problems.
So you're saying nothing's gonna be done, that's all I need to know. Are we gonna do something about it, or are we not doing something?
Well, that would be up to a discussion of the city council, whether they want to do something. In my opinion, it would be no, but that would be their...
And when's this gonna make this, I need to get going on this, we've been, you know, I mean, I'm gonna keep dealing with water until this gets handled. You just can't reroute water, it's illegal. And you guys rerouted water, state debt, I don't know who in the hell to go after. I don't know why this is even your guys' problem, I don't even know why I'm even talking to you guys. This is a state project that I should be dealing with the state, and I don't know why I'm here.
Nobody wants to give us the number for the state, and that's why we're here, is because we were told that this is the city's, you know, you guys signed off on this, it's done and finished, and so...
We have not signed off on it yet.
Yeah. That's one item that is for tonight.
Okay.
We're actually supposed to discuss this.
Well, we were, so, when we came down to the city office, the day that the contractors were done, at noon on Friday of, you know, I don't have the exact date, okay, but they had said it is now a city issue. We, we talked to the contractor, and that's what he said too, for driving over this thing, if they need to make, um, changes, then you'll have to talk to the city about it, because we no longer are doing anything with this.
You, you were talking to the contractor?
Yes, because Pat took us down there, she was there and was present during this conversation. She also told us it was at noon today, they were finished, which was...
Which was July first, Friday, July.
Okay.
Well, we have not signed off on it yet.
So who am I supposed to go after? Somebody's gonna fix this.
I just want to finish my yard. When did you guys purchase the home?
Two years ago.
October of twenty...
Three years.
Sixteen.
Okay, and how did you build there that time?
On and off.
And prior to this sidewalk being built and those culverts being placed, you never had any issues with water?
We don't have the water we have. We have a video camera, we could actually, probably could go back and look at the cameras when it rains back, when, because it goes right out that window.
The door went right down the alley.
Correct.
And because of that east culvert, it goes like this now.
So we could actually look at a rainfall, and I would have to go back and see if I could pull that up at the rain, I'm trying to do that now, what rainfall looked like before, what rainfall looks like now. And I guarantee you, we have a heck of a lot more water than what we have. But I just don't know what I'm supposed to do, everybody's like, you're gonna have to build it up, you're gonna have to do this, you're gonna have to spend money, you're gonna have to spend money, you're gonna have to spend your time. I'm not gonna spend nothing. And I'm gonna, gonna spend my time and my money going to an attorney and have them figure it out, because nobody wants to tell me who's gonna fix it. You just can't reroute water, it's illegal. The whole thing over there, you can't do that. You can't just put culverts in and drown somebody out. You wanna drown somebody out, you drown your city park out, because you could have ran it that way, but they didn't want to spend the extra money, because it was forty-something thousand dollars. Not my problem.
The dates I have here, it says you guys purchased the home November 3rd of 2016, does that sound correct?
Possibly.
No, we, well...
No.
Yeah, we took ownership, I suppose, November, but we bought it in September, okay?
And then constantly, we started in July of 2017, does that sound correct?
That's when we were here full-time, yes.
So, you said you have cameras, you have video footage that can prove...
I'm hoping, yes.
That prior to this.
Correct. But it doesn't matter, you just don't put two culverts in. I don't really have to prove, you proved why you've got two culverts there. Anytime you put culverts, it's culverts are made to run water off. Obviously, we're not getting anywhere in this conversation, I just need to name who I'm supposed to contact because of the situation. Is it the city problem or state problem? Two questions, city problem or state problem? That's my question.
Well, that would depend on if you can prove whether or not those culverts in building that sidewalk is actually what's causing the problem.
I won't prove, my attorney will prove. By whom am I going after, the city or the state? And that's why my attorney told me to come here today. Is it the city issue or the state issue?
The way it stands right now is the city has not signed off on it, meaning that we owe them money, but we're not signed off on it. There's an overage balance. So, in essence, they're still holding the bag. Now, does that give them legal culpability or legal responsibility? I don't know the answer to that. I'm not a lawyer, thank God. So, here's my point, just give us an opportunity to discuss this today.
Alright.
We will get back in touch with you after this meeting, and if you want to, feel free to stay for the meeting. Item number twelve B is that SRTS project, so...
Good work.
It's up to you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Just give us an opportunity to figure out what to do.
What was your name?
Terry Christensen.
Terry, who's your attorney?
Uh, right now, we're dealing with Chuck.
Chuck?
Yep.
Well, I don't know if Chuck was involved in this project or not, um, but it'd be interesting if he was, and now he's representing you. That may be for another day. I, I'd tell Chuck to probably draft you up a letter and send it to the city, explaining exactly what your problem is, in, in terms of what he sees as, as the legal issue. You, you know what I mean? Because I can tell you, I go to the doctor, I can tell him I feel sick, but I can't use the big words that he uses that justifies me paying a bunch of money, because I gotta money.
That's why I have to pay the five thousand dollars.
Right, well, but I think what Chuck could do is he could probably put it in a letter to the city saying, look, here's the issue, okay? And I'm just thinking out loud here, that may give us, uh, the ability to say to the state, hey, we have a problem, because we've known that this is an issue for a little bit, wheels of government sometimes move slowly, I get you frustrated, but, um, the fact that you've got a problem and it's not going, it sounds like the way it's supposed to from your perspective, means it might not be going the way it is from our perspective. And if it ends up being the state's problem, maybe we're all on the same team. Maybe we're not, but, you know, if you can get Chuck to send us a letter telling us exactly what he thinks your issue is, stick around for the meeting to discuss this tonight, you may be able to move forward.
Colonel, thank you.
I get you, I get you frustrated, and...
He wanted us to come to the city council meeting last month, and that's why we're here again tonight, to see if anything had been decided, or even discussed. I mean, because we're kind of, we don't...
We don't...
Want to get to that stage if we don't need to.
Right.
You know, but it is frustrating, because we're starting to do renovations on our house now, and so, I mean, we already have a bunch of dirt work that already got washed away, so...
We don't have the ability to actually meet. What we had decided was that we would, on our own, and I did the same thing, we would walk the path, we would see just exactly what's happening, um, and I, I, I'm, I can't speak for anybody else, I looked. Uh, when I looked at it, as soon as I looked at it, I realized it was ADA, because the natural thing would have been to follow the, the contour of the existing lawns on both sides, and I thought, if I was in a wheelchair, and I was trying to go up that, or, or even worse, go down that, it would be horrible. Well, especially if I was the one running the wheelchair, you know, on my own. So I, I knew why it was done. I would still like to talk to somebody, and I don't know who to, who to get in touch with myself, but I'd like to talk to somebody and find out, you know, what alternatives do we have to move this water, because obviously, there is gonna be water now. We've got a dam there where there wasn't a dam, so...
Well, the other concern, I guess, is that we made this, uh, you know, drive over, it was poured thicker, so people could drive over it, but nobody's driving over it.
Well, they can't...
Nobody can park on the other side.
So that's another fail of the state.
We don't want them driving over that. You'd have to have a, a monster truck to drive over that.
Correct. And that's what I'm getting at, is...
So technically, it's being the, I think the alley is gonna, I mean, I may be speaking way premature here, but I think eventually, the alley will be eliminated. There will not be that alley way there, because of this sidewalk. Um, I guess, the way to look at it is, because of the ADA requirements, it had to be built up the way it is, understandable. It's too bad that there isn't something that they could have come back to us and said, before they finished the project, we're gonna have water going here, here, and here.
But I don't understand, like, how they couldn't see that in the original engineered design.
We're not engineers.
They knew the slope, no, and I, I'm not blaming you guys, I'm just saying, the original design that was proposed and approved and everything, they knew the slope of that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, admittedly, that was changed in the process, during the process of doing this. So, you're right, somebody did not notice something that should have been obvious. Well, there's, myself and one of the other council members went over there and looked at it, and we're the ones that had them put those little swales in there to help the lid. Dave Larson, who is on here, he also looked at it later and sent me an email, and he thought maybe if we plugged the one culvert on the east side, that that might help. Now, we haven't done that yet, and I don't know if that would or not, but we could, we could sure try that, and then see if that helps. All the water then would go on the west side.
Isn't that just gonna flood up the next, the backyard?
And I don't know if that would all go out on...
That's more centered kind of in the alley. The other one is...
It's a pond that goes across there.
Right, let's go, get to there.
Yeah. I find it...
But anyway, that was...
I mean, I'm open for suggestions, I just...
Dave thought maybe that would work. Lance and I thought the swales would help, and I think it did help some. Like, we, we're gonna discuss this again later on in the...
We'll just stick around and...
I think your best route would be do what Sam said, and...
Sure, yep, and that's kind of what our plan was, Chuck just kinda led us to touch base first before we did that, and just so that you guys knew, you know, are concerned, first of all, so you just didn't get this letter in the mail and didn't know what we were talking about, so...
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
I would like to go back to my question, this question here. How do we calculate this forty hours, excuse me, forty dollars per hour, how is that calculated?
In January of each year, we have a resolution that is passed, and part of that resolution is a fee set by the city. In that resolution is fees, a, um, account, a fee that the city employee is used to do tasks, hire out. Um, it's obviously, uh, I'm so confused if I had it, I believe. We, we have it broken down by using any piece of equipment that we have, either with an operator, and then one of the fees is just doing, um, additional work by a city employee.
So that total comes to forty dollars an hour?
That is the fee that it is charged.
For any city employee who gets called out to do any job, it's a flat forty?
Well...
Above and beyond?
Right, above and beyond.
So, you're saying that forty dollars an hour is a reasonable way to charge someone, an office employee, to go through and look at records?
That is...
I don't recall if I was involved in that book, I don't believe I was.
I have it in art, I'll look up this. Sorry, I tried to bring them with me. I'll give you the twenty eighteen fees, um, the structure is the same, but, um, that's how it's worded, is labor. And I'll give you the twenty eighteen, the structure is, like I said, it's exactly the same, but that's just seventeen.
Councilwoman Kay, I would suggest you look at the FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act and what it says.
I have the twenty eighteen.
The other thing is, is that I amended that, I said...
This is not public input now, this is city council.
It's still public input.
I have that, this is back to...
I was actually referring back to all these persons. I'm sorry, I was...
Um, the thing is, is that you can have copies made, or you can have access to it.
Right.
And what I was being told is, whether I had access to look it up on myself here at the table, that was gonna cost me forty dollars an hour.
I understand that, it's just before that, I was not aware that...
It's, it's closing, it has the effect of closing the records, and I will pursue that.
And I understand that, and prior to reading that, I did not know that the rate was forty dollars an hour, and that's why I'm frustrated now.
That's why I gave you the packets that I did.
Thank you. So, this, this charge you're referring to, you're referring to is liberator, and that falls under maintenance?
That is, that is the fee for a city employee, which I am...
I thought you wanted to read it.
No.
Not, no. Sorry. So I guess my question for the council is, why are we charging forty dollars an hour, which is the maintenance fee for an office job that does not require the same things that a maintenance shop requires?
It's still taking time away from...
I, I'm not saying that we can't charge a fee, I'm saying we, the law says reasonable, it has to be a reasonable fee. Forty dollars an hour for maintenance, that might be a separate issue, and I don't know if that's a reasonable rate to charge for... if that's a reasonable rate to charge for these sorts of things, that just not seem like a reasonable rate to charge for someone making a FOIA request. It seems like it's purposely deterring people from making these requests. I would call that arbitrary, I would call that very troublesome, and I would urge the council to rewrite this rule.
Or else we need to restructure our fees. I mean, I'd like to see that when you get a chance, Mr. Mayor.
I'll probably suss around.
Oh, yeah, this is...
Well, it looks to me like it needs to be put somewhere, and...
This says labor.
Well, and above that is, you know, I am...
City or office.
Yeah, I see that.
The request that she, that Vicki made, is three years of annual data, or two and a half years. The 2016 files are already stored away on the state. If she wants to go through every rep, every check, what could be done is, I could generate all the check numbers for each employee that she's questioning, and she can pull them all herself.
I'm not just concerned about this particular situation, as she is already stated, she can come in and do this herself, and the labor is not an issue. I'm saying, for the future, anytime someone comes in and wants to make a request, are we going to be charging them forty dollars an hour?
Well, according to this, it looks like we will, because there is no other provision. Now, I'm not saying that's right, I'm just saying, that's the way it is.
Well, you've got to take this into consideration, too.
Joe?
Mr. Mayor, real quick, a couple, just a couple points on this.
Okay.
First, just so we all know, and it's a common thing, FOIA is federal, okay? Freedom of Information Act only implies the federal records. What we're talking about here is South Dakota's open records law, as Vicki Conner first threw correctly, what most people call the sunshine law. The reasonable fee that you're talking about is, for easy stuff like photocopies, if you come in and want to see something I have easily accessible, there's a reasonable fee for that. And I can't remember the statute off the top of my head, but there's another section of the law that talks about charging for what's called staff time. So, if I've got to go, and I've got to pull a bunch of records out of cold storage and pick through pieces, you get to charge staff time, which includes my wage, and it factors in things like retirement, looking the stuff up on the computer, wear and tear on a bunch of other things. So, what you have here is a forty dollar fee, you can use, or we can calculate staff time to do that. But either way, if it's going to cost, you know, if we've got to go through and get, my understanding with some of this issue is that there's a bunch of check stubs. So, we've got to go through and find, you pull out individual check stubs for four hours, you can charge staff time for that, and you can figure out the dollar amount. Or you can use the forty. There's no bright line that says forty is reasonable and unreasonable, so if you are concerned as a council with the forty dollar amount, perhaps you need to look at what the average city hourly rate is, and then figure out what other things like insurance, retirement, healthcare, all that stuff costs, and there's your staff time dollar. If you are concerned with the forty dollar.
Another thing you've got to take into consideration is, the city office employees are very busy all the time. And if somebody comes, if they get a request to do this, they have to stop what they're doing at that time and go to this thing, so they're doing, trying to do two things at the same time, and I, to me, that's a reasonable fee. I don't see where that's not, or it's not reasonable.
They do not have to stop doing what they have been given, a timeframe. In addition, that's why I provided the program snapshots, that the program, you can run that, you can do a year at a time. I emailed the folks that do that program, this is the program I was told that the city uses.
We use the free version, though. You have to understand that.
Well, the thing is, is that if you're in business, and like I said, the FLSA requires that you have this information on file, that's something that, and like I said, that this is something, it's exorbitant.
Well, it may sound exorbitant, but by definition, the labor rate is forty dollars an hour. So technically speaking, the rate is correct, whether we want it. We remain at that number from this point on, or subsequent, another resolution, I don't know. But, right now, forty dollars an hour is the legitimate value, according to our resolution and the fees associated with that resolution, so...
Mr. Nelson, what is your court hourly cost to the city council? Two hundred an hour?
No, no, they get the special rate, a hundred and fifty.
Okay, still a hundred and fifty. Sounds kind of like that forty dollar charge sometimes, too. So, you guys, it's your choice.
Great.
I'm not, I'm not requesting to change it, I'm requesting that we look at how much it actually costs to do this. I spoke with, I'm not sure if I can say his name right, the Assistant Attorney General, Brent Kempf, I might be pronouncing that wrong. I did talk to him about it, and he, I'm not going to go into too many details, I'll talk to you later. Maybe I should just stop.
If you have, if you have information from the Assistant AG that says forty dollars is too much, that would probably be...
And that's the thing, it's, there is, like you said, there is no bright line that says, once you cross, once you charge this specific dollar, not we've gone too far, it's the fact of making sure it's not arbitrary. Is that, is that the actual cost to have one of our office employees comply with a FOIA request?
Well, my point is, it's the actual cost that's on the fees. Now, how that number was derived, I don't know, because I wasn't involved in the discussion about how that number was come up with, but it's on the fees. So, to me, that's what makes it legitimate. And again, I'm saying, it's a lot of money. But, at the same time, that fee schedule says forty dollars an hour. So, I think it's a legitimate number. I think that the best answer is for Mrs. Larson to spend the labor herself, which is time, but certainly not forty dollars an hour, it's not three hundred and twenty dollars, and I don't know, maybe, maybe the amount of time would be worth three hundred and twenty dollars to you. I...
And that's absolutely true.
And that's right, but I was given the same cost, whether I looked at it or whatever. It made, because I said, okay, then, I just want access to it, and I can go through it. And I got the, it's in your packet, it's the same letter that...
It's not exactly correct, though, because I did tell you that you would just subtract the labor charge.
No, that's not...
If you chose to go through it yourself.
As I said, that this is nothing more than restrictive practices.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could ask a question, are there items of personal data that would be available for someone to look at that is not a city employee, that maybe they shouldn't be seeing, social security numbers, information like that in those records?
No.
No.
Then it would probably be all right to have someone that's not a city employee dig through those things?
As far as I understand it, yes, that would be, that would be something they could do.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, just to wrap this up, were forty dollars done that nobody's going to discuss further, nobody's looking into research, we get to make sure that that's the actual cost?
Well, it is, it's, we just researched it. That's the labor cost.
July is budget month, so if it's, we're going to be talking about the budget for 2019, and...
That's when we should make a change.
And that is when then we can, unless you want to change by resolution, again, to modify, but that would be when this document can be updated, for 2019.
That was what I was saying, too, was, we should, we should visit, you know, I'm not necessarily...
When I say actual cost, I don't mean the number on that paper, I mean the actual cost to pay an employee to go through the interview. If the person requesting it would want someone in the office to do it.
That's what we would use to modify that fee schedule.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that's something we do need to look into, but, for the next budget.
I agree.
Okay, so we, you got any more on that?
Nope.
Okay, then we can move on to finding and zoning ordinance motion to approve second reading of the 2018 planning and zoning ordinance.
I did not have that in your packet, I figured you had it.
No, we've got, we've had plenty of copies of that, yeah. I guess after looking at the revised version, I don't see any glaring issues. I would make a motion to approve the second reading of the 2018 planning and zoning ordinance. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Dave. Street update, Lonnie is not here.
He is not, no. They are hoping to do patching next week on the areas that need that. The chip sealing will be happening in August. I don't have it exactly at this time, but the last time I saw the road guide, that's when it will be, it'll be after the fair.
Okay, and then there is, the road going into the fairgrounds, the gravel road that was put in, right by the Highway 11, where it hits the gravel, there's a, it's dropped down about, I'd say, four or five inches, and then a little bit of the concrete has broke off the edge. The truck drivers are telling me that it's pretty rough going over that. We've talked to, Pat talked to Lonnie today to see what it would take. I know, I understand, it isn't, it isn't our road. We put that in there, and the purpose of it was to alleviate the pressure of First Street, which it has done, and that's a big bonus to us, so that we don't have to redo First Street. For around two, two hundred and fifty for material, they can go in there, Lonnie can go in there and fill that, and then there's a few hole, well, I wouldn't call them holes, bumps on down further that he could do for, and we could spend two hundred and fifty dollars, it's up to you guys. My opinion is, they're going to be using that road a lot during the fair, all people going in and out of that, and I'd like to see the thing fixed. I wish we could spend the two hundred and fifty and just get the thing fixed.
The two hundred and fifty dollars is for gravel? Put a load of gravel in it?
That's what it's for.
So it's just gravel?
Yeah.
I was wondering whether that was base course and...
No, no, just, all they need to do is just put some rock on it.
People are over at midnight and...
Yeah. But it is pretty bad.
Is this actually West Clark Street, is that this item? Seat?
Yes.
So, it's up to you guys, if you want, I don't know if you need, do we need a motion to pay that, or...
No, I mean, it's just...
Okay, if you can disagree to pay it, to do it. What do you think, David?
I think that's East Clark Street, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in favor of spending two hundred and fifty dollars.
It's actually referred to as West Clark Street.
Is it West? Whatever.
I don't know why.
The one-way.
Clark Street. We know. No, the one-way, Iowa Street is where it changes to West, so...
Yeah. Anyway, okay, are you guys cool with that?
I'm very much in favor.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and spend the two hundred and fifty on that. Now, insect spraying, there's been, I've heard a lot of complaints about the people who are going out to the golf course and they can't finish the round because the bugs are so bad out there. There's a couple different ways to look at this. Some people are going to say that they get sick from the spray, and then they're going to have a big issue with that, other people are saying that they can't do what they want to do because of the insects. I don't know if there's any way we can get a grant now, or is it too late to that, too late to get a grant to spray? I don't, is Lonnie, is he, can he do it? He can't do it?
No, I don't know. And we don't have a fogger, it's something we've never done. We don't have a fogger, we don't have a certified sprayer.
Yeah, we have to get somebody that is certified to do it. Usually, those little black gnats, they're around for several weeks and then they disappear. This year, they're late. Usually, it's around Mother's Day when they hit you, but...
I think it's something we need to look into for the future.
In the future.
However, I don't think there's much that we can really do this here.
Okay, you know, we just needed to bring it out and to discuss it, so... Then we need a one-time burn, the brush pile at the golf course and Sixth Street property.
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
Are they going to burn the Sixth Street property, pile, where it's at or moving?
No, where it's at.
Burn it, yeah.
Okay, great.
Do you find, I'm just, I'm lost right now, Sixth Street property, where? What are we talking about?
Southeastern.
What's that?
Oh, southeastern, the trees up in the north.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
All those, all the trees that we took out.
It's back in the field. I understand.
And Lonnie is going to clean up the dirt that's there. There's some roots that need to be ground out, so he's going to rent a stump grinder and grind out the remaining roots that they weren't able to get, and then smooth it over, and then throw out some brome, just to have a little bit of brown cover there, and go from there.
I don't know if any of you guys have been up there, or they took that brush out on the north side of the field, and that is so cool, now, of course, it's really neat what we see now. But anyway, we need a motion to burn on those two properties, on the Sixth Street property and at the golf course. One-time city burn. What's that?
Dave will make that motion.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Dale isn't here?
No, but he did not have anything for water waste.
Okay, Pete, by the way, he came down and did a water test today at the store, so that'll be coming back here, listen. Okay, and it's been running good, as usual. Okay, chief.
Am I, can I sit at the big kid table?
Yeah, you can.
Okay. Vicky, get my left side, that's my good one.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm, this is my first, kind of almost full month here, so I've got a lot of stuff, hopefully that's okay, just give you guys a little update and the public, if they're interested. Austin and I have kind of started some business introductions, we've kind of been walking around town, I'm not a local kid, obviously, so I've just been walking around doing that a little bit. Austin's been going with me, he knows everybody, starting with inventory, all computer, all the computer programs, just simple stuff like getting, getting everything logged into, Austin and I versus the other two guys that were here. That actually takes a lot of time, and we've been working on it. Ammunition, we had none. I had to order some ammunition, practice rounds, and actual duty carry rounds. The stuff we had was old, and we barely had any, so that was a little bit of a bill, to the two, and I think seven hundred dollars. So that was, that was a little bit of money. We put new locks on the PD office, and to include the evidence locker. Austin and I are the only ones that have locks on the evidence locker due to chain of custody reasons. So, we wanted new locks for the PD office, just because we didn't know how many keys were out and, out and about, and we had a lot of part timers in the last five years, we wanted to start fresh and new, so we did that as well, our...
Excuse me, just a moment. So you... Excuse me, just a moment. So you two are the only ones that have the evidence locker key? How about the police department key? The actual office.
To the PD office?
Yeah.
It'd be Austin and I, uh, the, our part-time guy who's still on, Austin Van Horn.
Okay.
And then a master one is in the locker. The city office is with that one.
And that's a fire file? That's a fire safe tech?
Yep. But the evidence is Austin and I. Well, that makes sense.
That makes perfect sense.
Uh, okay, Kendra, you guys hired her before I got here as a part-time. Um, she accepted my position that I left as a deputy. So she is not going to work part-time here. Um, I congratulated her and wished her the best.
Yeah.
Van Horn is still on our part-time roster. Um, we have not used him since I took office. I, I just, we don't, don't seem to need to either. Uh, yeah. So there, there may be a time where one of us wants to take a little bit of vacation and maybe we'll cycle him in for a shift or two. But we seem to be getting along just fine with the two of us. We cover, I cover when he needs it. He covers when I need it. It's, it's going well.
Okay. He, he can't hear you. Do you agree with that? Going well?
Yeah. Uh, so yeah, Van Horn is still on our roster, although he hasn't worked since I've been in office. Um, uniforms. We've gotten some uniforms. Uh, each gotten some polo shirts. Austin's, I don't know, he's got some, some full-blown uniforms up there. Uh, he looks good. Yep. Thanks. Uh, vests. I, we were able as a city to buy my county vest. Um, that's about an $1,100 vest. It was bought with half, half grant money and half county money. Uh, the county sold it to us for 50% of what they bought it for. I think it cost us 270 bucks, Pat. Um, so we got my vest for $270. It's still good for a little over three years. So, uh, it was a really good deal and it's a really nice vest. So I'm, it's currently getting patches put on it right now, so I don't have it. Austin is going to utilize a vest that we had in storage. It's still got some time on it. And we, we just got an external carrier for it that looks like a uniform shirt, but it's, it's outside one. So when he comes in from the heat, he can take it off, type on some reports, get cooled down. Uh, so that was, you know, a hundred dollar deal. But in, Austin's utilizing an old vest that we had. Still got some time on it. It's all good to go. Um, sorry, I'm going to go for a little bit here. I want to get you guys updated.
All right.
Um, radios. There was a grant that we got radios. Uh, Chief Doty did this while he was in office. They're about seven to eight thousand dollar radios. There's two of them and Andy Minehan with the county, he got us set up with those. So there's two radios that would be programmed. It's going to cost us, uh, a couple hundred dollars to get them programmed. But then we have two brand-new radios and the best part about that is those radios are compliant for the next round of updates for the state radio system. So eventually the state may go to a cellphone-based tower system, which is a, it'll make all other radios obsolete. These ones are compatible with that and they're a lot of money and we got them on a grant. So $200 to get them programmed is a really spoken deal.
Yeah.
So if you guys see Andy Minehan, he's the emergency, what is he?
Emergency manager.
Emergency manager for the county. Yep. So he did, a lot of the local PDs got in on it and luckily we were one of them. So we're getting two brand-new radios for that. Uh, the vehicle maintenance were, we got the, you know, just oil changes and stuff. The truck was due, the car was due. Um, we're getting them on a cycle now with everything closed in Alcestor, so we're utilizing Dad's auto in Pierceburg. But just getting them on, you know, so we, the Crown Vic's got to go a few years yet, so we need to get it maintained. The, the truck's brand-new. We need to treat it like that. Um, we are going to get a light fixed on the Crown Vic from a previous accident that Dylan was involved in. Uh, like 60 bucks, we're going to get the light fixed. Uh, the rest of the insurance money, I think we just took back into the general fund. Does that grant that or?
It's going to go against the law.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Um, the truck was involved in a little bit of an incident. Uh, we're going to get some estimates on that. There was a transfer case laying in the road, in the roadway, and, uh, Austin tagged it with the front bumper and gave it a little whiskey dent. So we are going to look into how much that's going to cost to fix, but shouldn't be too much just to scratch on the bumper. Um, we're looking at the PD office. We're going to, we did buy some paint. We're going to look at painting up the PD office. We're still organizing, cleaning, a lot of cleaning. Evidence is still a mess. Um, I got a couple of weeks of worth of work down there. Biggest problem on evidence, I can't just go through and destroy old stuff because if it pertains to a case where possibly somebody's still in the pen or there's a possibility that they could go back on their case or anything, I gotta look at, I got a lot of things to research before I can just destroy stuff. But we do have a mess downstairs. We'd like to get some shelving units to at least get stuff off the floor. So if there's water that comes in the basement or something, we're not destroying the evidence.
You're talking about just freestanding shelves?
Yeah, some plastic ones from Walmart, just to get stuff off the floor because I'd hate for water to come in and cause the damage. Not that it would, but you just feel better about it. Um, you're going to see Austin and I a couple of times a month. We're going to work a midship, like a, a 1:00 to 9:00 PM, and we're going to work it together. Uh, my goal there is to do some training together. We're both, we're not new to law enforcement, but we're new to each other. So I want one or two shifts a month where we can work together. Um, some of that's going to be cleaning up evidence and stuff. But some of it, you know, we might ride together and just get a, a better feel and develop a good relationship and communication and see how each other works. So you're going to see that a little bit, but again, only a couple of days a month. Um, I'm not going to use it just once in a while. We're going to do it. Uh, just creating a good team, you know what I mean? Um, training, we're going to, I talked to both the fire chief and the president of ambulance. Um, they would love to team up on some active shooter training. Um, training if one of us gets shot, what do they do with our firearm if we're incapacitated, stuff like that. So, uh, I think that's great. I, I'm actually an EMT, so I would like to continue that relationship with the ambulance service because it would, it counts for me to, to continue, uh, continuing education on the EMT hours. So, so I would like that. I think that's going to be great. And it just develops that whole team atmosphere in Alcestor too and ultimately make us safer. So. Um, yeah, had to update the state with new officers. They keep a rolling list of whose officers in each city got them updated. Um, NIBR's, it's National Incident Based Reporting System, has not been done. A little bit in 16, a couple of reports in 17, and nothing in 18. I need to work with the state and you're going to see me at the office more than I want to this first six months in office. I don't want to be in here. I want to be out on the street running some traffic. That alone, the NIBR's reporting, is something that we need to be doing. It's going to take some time. And I, there's just no way around it. It's going to be on the computer, calling the state, this is what I got. This is what I need to report.
So are you able to start now and keep current from here on while you're doing, you know, I realize it's going to take time to get caught up.
Yeah.
But you're able to at least start right now and do it and maintain.
I was actually on the phone with the state gal today, the DCI gal who does this, uh, who we've been in contact. So we're going to get enrolled currently and then I'm trying to go retroactive. The problem is, is some of the officers previous to me, um, they would do reports in Word and not necessarily in the program that we're paying for. So I have reports in the file cabinet. I have reports in Word format on the computer. Some of them in Report Exec, which we're paying for, a thousand dollars a year. So I have reports all over the place and it's a mess.
So is it your goal to have it all in Report Exec when you're done or?
Uh, as soon as I took to office, we, all reports are done in Report Exec. We're paying for this program. That's what I told Austin. We're paying a thousand dollars a year for this program to work for us. We're going to use it. We're not using.
But I mean, the ones that were on, in Word or are printed or whatever, are you going to take the time to actually put them in?
You can't do that.
Do that.
You know, the only problem is, is generating a number for a previous year. It's, it's almost impossible.
Understood. Okay.
So, but from this point forward, yes, it will be done, right? Um, I got to update the 1033 program. I am in the process of working with the state representative for that. That's a, we have rifles that are Army surplus rifles. There's one for each vehicle. Um, we are accountable for those rifles. Each serial number goes to the individual officer where it's in their vehicle. Uh, once a year, we're audited by the 1033 program. Um, I don't want to make it sound like a huge deal, but it is a big deal. Um, they're allowing us to have these rifles on Army surplus scenario. Um, we just have to be audited every year and we have to set up that we are, that we do have them and we have not changed them. So I'm just, it's another, uh, two-day paperwork deal that I got to sit on the computer and do it. I don't want to be in there. I want to be outside, but it is what it is.
Is that basically recording serial numbers and maybe even photographs or?
There's photographs, there's serial numbers, and then the state representative for 1033 program actually, I believe, has to come in.
Has to touch them.
Has to turn them, lay eyes on them. And since there's been a change of chief and officer, he has to come in and do that. So I've been emailing back and forth. I've gotten the forms filled out. It's just finishing it now.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, and then I guess the biggest thing is, just a general thank you to the, I know I've talked to individual council members. I, I've had a lot of questions. I've had a lot of help. Pat and Juan in the city office, these first three weeks where I've been here have been, uh, enormous amount of help. So I can't say thanks enough. And then I know I've worked with Melissa, I've worked with Lance, I, you know, I, I've had, I've had questions for everybody, including the mayor, and I can't thank enough. Just thanks for the opportunity to be here in Alcestor and we're going to make it safe. So that's where we're at. That's where I speak.
Well, when I looked at your, uh, stats report?
Yeah.
I mean, still pie graph form, but it wasn't evident to me. Now, I'm not saying it needs to be, but it used to be that it would say, for instance, you know, Officer X, Officer Y, and so on.
Yep. Yep.
Did you do that on purpose or?
I did. Yeah.
That's cool.
My, my thought is, I understand what the previous chief did. He, he categorized it out by each officer. And, and I don't know, I, I'm going to change that up and I'll tell you why. It's because Austin and I and part-timer Van Horn were a team. Okay. We don't, it's not a competition that who blows out and writes more tickets. It's, we're going to show productivity by doing our stat reports. Um, there's a lot, you know, one case report, you might have five days' worth of work and that's one number on there.
Yeah.
Um, you can go out and write a ticket and that counts as another number and I can do that in two minutes. Um, I just personally did not like how we separated it out by individual officer. To me, that creates a, not a team atmosphere and competition. And I'm not in a competition with my fellow employee who's my teammate. We work together and we're going to get it done and keep the Alcestor safe. So.
Good answer. Okay, I got just one quick question. If somebody has some old ammunition, can they bring it to you to get rid of? Or how do you, how do you get rid of it without firing it?
Um, it, it's actually not, it's not that. I don't, that's tough. And I, I can tell you what I do in my place, but I have seven acres.
Yeah, I mean, that's true.
If I did butt in, it'd be, you know, I wouldn't think the ammunition would be unsafe. It's just if it ever gets moisture in there, it just won't fire.
Right.
It would be the biggest thing.
Yeah. The, when, when I lived in Des Moines, they had a program. If you had old ammunition that you were never going to use again, you could take it from the police department and just, they, just give it to them and they would take care of it. Whatever. I don't, I don't know what they did with it, but that was just a.
Well, definitely take care of it.
Does the sheriff's office have a, a place where a person can take old, uh, out-of-date, uh, prescription medication?
Yes, they do.
Do they also support the ammunition possibly?
Uh, not when I was there. Um, that had, that happened a couple of times where somebody didn't want old ammunition. It was, it was taken care of.
Right. Well, so, so they did take it. They took it from the individual and they just.
Who didn't want it.
Is it something that you want to throw in the trash and have it hold?
No, and you don't want somebody to find it. They don't want to do that, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay.
Destroyed or destroyed.
Yeah. So if you have some old ammo there, you can bring it to me.
I don't have it. I don't. Great question. Okay. Um, do we need executive session or anything for you?
Uh, there was just, hang on, what's that?
Sign or?
Oh, there, well, there was a sign that was put on by you, Chris, under PD?
Did you want me to take that?
Yeah.
It just says, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
So it's kind of a long story. Um, my first book here, I always, this is five years ago, this is ever. I never understood why the police cars were always parked outside of this building because I don't know why there was a police department. Especially when they're going to jail. Why are there these police cars parked in these buildings? So that's the police station in the building. So after that, never really thought about it again. It just came. It's just normal. And I never thought about it again until Kendra came to drop off the job application. And she didn't know where to go, even though she was given the address, she was given directions. Um, she ended up going through the grocery store and, good small-town story. Someone in the grocery store actually drove her here and showed her how to get there. Kind of cute story, but I just thought it was kind of odd that nobody would know if you're an outsider coming in. Nobody knows this is a waste.
Right.
So my thoughts were, do we need to have some sort of sign letting people know?
Right. We definitely will after the city office moves.
And I think I've mentioned that too. When the city office moves, somebody's got to know it's built in.
Sooner would be better than later. I agree with it. I, I think we should get signed. Yeah, we can, we can get some put outside the city police office, outside of Alcestor PD or Alcestor Police Department or whatever. Yeah, it makes sense. I, I mean, somebody that comes through town should actually see that sign so that they are aware. Well, if they haven't got a police department, well, they probably would see a vehicle or maybe two or more.
That being said, do you, do you include, um, do you say City Hall and list the offices? Or if the potential move is there, do you leave that off or?
Well, I would say only in the interest of keeping the cost down because we are obviously going to end up with a sign until we're there, right?
Right, right.
I'm assuming yes.
I mean, maybe, I don't know, not necessarily mention, it doesn't say City Hall right now, does it? Does it say municipal building or doesn't it say?
It's very community building.
Community building. Okay.
Well, there is a police parking sign out front and storm shelter sign out front.
Yeah.
Maybe some vinyl stickers.
Yeah, to me, I would say.
That doesn't make it a police.
Vinyl stickers on the windows maybe? Like, that can be a low-cost thing since the offices are moving, like on the front door type of thing.
Well, that, that was.
I'm just saying something you can see on the street.
Yeah, I, I think it would be better if it was actually on the building because eventually this will be the police department and almost exclusively. Well, we still have an auditorium, obviously, but, um, as far as we look in the office though, it's just going to be your office, you know? We can look into getting this signed.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Do you have any, do we need executive session?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make motion to enter it to executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2-1 personnel.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I have a second. Melissa's motion to enter the executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2-1 personnel.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at 7:10.
Coming weekend, this latest tournament, uh, the middle of the week following that is the, uh, private party coming in with, uh, two or three dozen golfers and, uh, people that are eating. And then at the end of the month, we have the fireman's tournament. Uh, kind of a couple tough weeks with all the rain and the ice. Pulling together and except for raining a little bit of swamp, we're doing all right.
Okay.
I, I would like to report that, uh, the health department was in and Kathy had, uh, one issue. Uh, she got 98 out of 100 on the, uh, kitchen there. She needs to get the test strips so that she can test the, uh, chemical.
Sanitation?
In, in the dishwater.
Yeah, yeah, the san, sanitation chemicals. Yeah.
Uh, the, that, things are going fine.
Cool. Now, that was a good report. Very good report.
Okay, thank you David.
You're welcome.
All right. Crime and offense update, Pat. All right, finance office update, Pat.
Um, before we approve warrants, there are two warrants that were withheld. One of them is for the swimming, or diving board. Everything is in, the diving board is functioning, the, the final payment on that board is twenty-four thousand, two eighty-seven thirty-seven. So I, I did cut the check, but before I sent it into the company, I wanted you guys to make sure that you were okay with sending the check.
I went up there, looked at that diving board, and I jumped on it, and moved the roller and everything, and boy, I'm telling you, one thing I really appreciate about it is it says right on the side, "Made in the USA." It's good stuff, it's, it's the best board I've ever seen, I've never seen anything like it before. It's got rib construction, I mean, it's, it's good stuff.
Two fifty.
Yep, and all of the guards are aware of that. I know, yes, they are very much aware of that now.
Okay.
Pat, I would like to make a comment about that one, that one board for the golf course. We had our guy that comes and gets our system, irrigation system set up for the spring. We brought out a couple new heads, installed those. We've been, had been trying to contact him to see if he would bring out a control board, because one of our control boards, the irrigation timer, had broke, had burned out. And after Landon contacted him a couple times, or tried to contact me, he didn't get back to us, so Landon and I ordered one from a different supplier. When he came, he had brought one, he put his in, charged his fourth, and in the process of picking up his tools and everything, he took our control board with him. So I guess I would like to recommend that we withhold two hundred and fifty dollars until he sends that back.
Now, I did look at the date on this check, and this check was mailed on June fourth.
Oh, check is already sent.
That is correct. Does this...
Well, if he wants to do any more business with the golf course in Alcestar, I would say he should send that back.
Exactly.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
All right, thanks, David.
So before you make the motion to approve the warrants, I just need Landon to sign up on this one, unless this one's done.
Next, the twenty-fourth.
It's in street, and I, um...
Which one?
It's a Visa, it's a...
Forty-three dollars, eighty-five cents.
I'm, I'm sure it's manufactured, so.
I do remember seeing a number, it was very small, it was twenty-five...
And it's a Visa.
Two dollars, two dollars, we had to write a check, I suppose that was mailed for another forty, fifty, whatever, cents. Forty-three, you said, not forty-six?
Forty-three. It will be a bill that probably does not have any type of...
Okay, no, that's why I'm trying to be very careful, because there, some of them like to stick together, and...
In street?
Water in streets. What's this one here? Look at that top one, that says fifty-two forty.
That's a payroll.
Sorry, but there was one that had a, what did you say? A quick paper here, this is my...
Oh, okay.
So that's the top one, you're looking at that for the read. It should be definitely voucher. And you look through these, if you know.
The last one?
Sure. Yep, it'll be written to me. Oh.
On it?
Okay.
Okay, let's go, all right. So then, we got all those together, so we get a motion to approve the warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants, excluding, excluding this one?
Well, no, she, she just held back the diving board, now that means the diving board check will be sent now.
That is correct.
Because basically, you were just after council approval to say, we're good.
Sign it anyway, you can go sign to like twenty, twenty-five, whatever.
They're... Yes, yes, because this one was, this is a different card, this is Dale's card, this is my card. But because they're both the same measure, they got to have the check. So yes, it will be signed.
So I'll make a motion to approve the June warrants.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Please, Linda, I'm sorry, Linda, please.
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Motion to sign up on project, if any overage of twenty-five dollars on the SRTS project.
So, I've gotten a letter from, um, the South Florida DOT to sign up on the Safe Routes to School. Given the conversation that happened earlier, um, my contact for this whole project started out as Marilyn Patterson, she was the head of the Safe Routes to School. Since this project has started, the Safe Routes to School committee has disbanded, and so my contact now is a gal by the name of Paula, all right, Paula Perzenga. And I will contact her and tell her the concerns, tell her the issues that we've had, and get her opinion on how to proceed.
Do we have, then, the ability? Before we sign off on it? To not sign off on the twenty thousand, then, and just wait until we know? Yes.
It would probably be rude to not.
Don't like that, we've got twenty thousand dollars of their money until we get an answer that's, I mean, somebody's gonna at least have to give us a good reason why if nothing's gonna be done. If they have to come down, look at it, and then that's fine with us, but we'll get an answer that way, but, 'cause we won't send the check until we...
Plus, we do have all the photos of, because I took photos the day that I went over to your house in that big rain. You have the photos from the different rains of date that are dated, so we do have information to share with them, and if you have, Mr. Hogg, then write a letter of concern.
More information can't hurt. Okay.
Look out, that light working yet?
It is a school light.
I thought they were gonna have it on during pool hours, too, so we can't do that then?
We cannot do that, it is strictly for school.
Just for school, okay.
So, a representative came down and did the training with Lonnie, I'm not sure if... Okay, so they did the training with Lonnie, but it will only be operational at school.
Is that twenty thousand dollars, was that budgeted already?
Um, it was originally thirty-two thousand, I did not know when this project was actually going to be completed, because, you know, we've been having this for a while. So it was not budgeted in this year's budget, no.
So where does that twenty thousand have to come from?
Well, we will have to do a supplement to the budget, and the school will still owe us five thousand, because they agreed to go in on this project with us, when we knew there wasn't going to be an overage. And originally, we were told the overage was thirty-two thousand, so coming in at twenty is, is good.
Okay, so basically, it just goes away for right now?
Correct.
Right. Okay, credit card, motion to approve thousand-dollar credit card limit for Chief Christie and a five-hundred-dollar credit card limit. For our other officer, is he here?
He's taking her.
This is standard, all city employees have a, a city credit card. The department heads have a thousand-dollar limit on their card, and the non-department heads are...
I move that...
Go ahead, Dan.
I move that we approve a thousand-dollar limit card for Chief Christie and five-hundred-dollar limit card for Officer Sculler.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. CBDG loans, discussion?
Um, a council member requested that this be just informational, and also to keep Sam knowledgeable about this. We have two CBGG loans to business owners that the business is no longer operating. At this time, neither party is involved on loans, they still are making no money.
So that's good news?
Yes.
Good news.
Alcestars retire.
And the state government.
And the state council.
Okay, um, parking at the city park.
There's gonna have to be a lot of discussion about this, uh, because, um, we do have two residents that could possibly lose the ability to get to the backyard.
Yeah.
Unless they drive through the park.
Exactly.
Um, and those two residents, Sunshine and, I forget, I don't know what it is, but anyway. So, the other thing is, we have a fire hydrant there, and I talked to Pat Cass, and we do have fire hydrants on each of the four corners. So no house would be without fire protection. There's a fire hydrant on Eileen Johnson's corner, which is Fourth and Park, there's a fire hydrant outside the swimming pool, there's a fire hydrant at Southeastern's corner on Sixth and Highway eleven, and there's a fire hydrant on, on near Short.
Yeah, yeah, and Short, yeah, Park.
So those are the four corners of the park area, and I talked to Pat Cass about that, because I asked him if we save that fire hydrant that is down below, what kind of a barrier system would we need? That's gonna kind of be out in the middle of nowhere, and it easily could get hit or backed into, or whatever the case is. And so, um, he would be okay with having it, if that's the decision that the council wants to make.
When Lance and I looked at that, that was sort of our question, was what are we gonna do with that fire hydrant?
Yeah.
Do we have to put some kind of a barrier around it, or what? And then Pat just answered our question, we, if we can just cap it, because we got fire protection for everybody within a half a block from every house of people.
Yeah, because you've got, you know, the park buildings are like in the center, and so you've got four points.
And then, another question that we looked at down there was that, that fence where an old ballpark was years ago, and we think it's wise just to take that out there, to get that fence. It's just, it's never used, it's just an ice rink there, it looks terrible, so we think we should just have, have that taken out. There's no... Go ahead, David.
I was just wondering if, if that would be taken out, would there be a, able to make a little parking lot there for maybe five or six cars?
That is the intent.
That's what our idea was at the time, yes.
What about allowing those two residents some kind of access across the park, if they wanna get to the back of their property?
Well, that's the other thing that Lonnie and I talked about, um, letting them drive, enter in where the campsites are, and drive to the back of their property that way. But, and Sam, you would have to help us on this as far as the legality, what kind of notifications would we need to make to the residents, telling them that they're changing their access to the park?
Just limited access, yeah.
What do you currently have now? I mean, what is their current access now?
Well, prior to...
It used to be an alley, but now we got this... They put that sidewalk in there, and it's gotta raise, they had to raise the sidewalk, and make it great.
It was the same spot.
Yeah, it's the two houses on the north side of that.
Yeah, I've been on... So they couldn't go in that parking lot, just pull up ways and come down, it's still too high?
Well, they'd have to drive all the way around the back.
Yeah, they'd have to go put around, yeah.
And if they were using some sort of a, like, say they wanted a piece of equipment or something, it would not be easy to put in and do that. There's gonna have to be some dirt work, too, because when you drive up there, because it's sat so long, it's dense, um, it's a pretty high ramp, you know, a SUV-type car, a vehicle can make a better car without problems.
Maybe that helps the water, it's true.
That's what I was thinking, before we do the dirt work, do we have anything else to figure out?
Yeah, let's make sure we do it right the first time.
Is it, if it slant down a little bit more and shoot it off more to the west, might help their situation.
You guys can help me a little bit on that, how much was that alley actually used before, was it used much at all before that sidewalk went in there?
We had, I mean, we had several families that use it for taking their kids to the park, um, when it's too cold to walk across town and that kind of thing, and then horseshoes, I don't know how often that was, but, I mean, people still use that.
Yeah.
I was surprised to see that, but, um, there's a few older gentlemen that still use it, kids ride their bikes all up and down there, I mean, which now was pointed out earlier, is they think it's really fun now, because there's just...
Absolutely.
This thing, and so, but, I mean, I don't know, it's, it was nice to be able to go down and turn around, whereas people, when they drive down there now, they're backing up into our yard or the neighbor's yard, and so, hard to bend.
Yeah, and then if we put a parking spot there, they could turn around.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, right.
That's where the old ice rink is, is what everybody says, if you put it where the ice park was, it'd be ideal.
Well, we actually think that's one of the reasons why the hydrant was put in in the first place, is to fill the ring.
That was a while years ago.
I know.
Um, so it would probably be... Um, so it would probably be, you'll probably have to do some research on.
A lot of research.
Well, I think, um, this isn't something that has to be done right away. And if we're... Money-wise, we're gonna have to find the money to fix this thing. I think that two things would be done right now would be to cap that, or that, we gotta cap that. Or hide it off and get that out of, take that fence out of there. And then sometime they could go in there and make a, put some gravel in there, make orgel on.
Do you want to wait and cap the hydrant until we do dirt work?
That's what I would think, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, yeah. I don't think there's any need to do it before that.
It probably wouldn't hurt for them to put some cones around it or something. I mean, I know they can see the hydrant. If you can't see the hydrant, why could you see the cones? But hey. A few things are sitting around. It wouldn't hurt to at least alert people, you know?
For now. Um, so do we need the...
No motion.
Well.
Not currently.
Yeah, we don't, we could just table that for now.
Well, we can take that fence out, just take the fence out.
We can take that out and hang that down.
So put them aside, so.
Okay. Personnel, personnel policy manual, discussion, committee members and meeting date.
So, um, I have, I'm starting to run out the options. One of the things that I would like to do, instead of having just council members review it, I'd like to treat it like how we treat our ordinances and have a group review the section, session, sections of the manual. Being the employees who are going to have to be the ones who have to read it. So, um, if it, if it would be possible, like, you know, I'd like to possibly have, like Lonnie, somebody from the police department possibly, if that's gonna be part of the manual.
Well, it is part of the manual, because they are employees. However, they have their own manual that we will have to revisit as well, but... But I think we need to have like one maintenance guys in there.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Have somebody from, some people from our city office in there. We need four, we need, we need four or five city employees. We need a couple council. Form a committee and get this, to do the work on it.
And if you, if you don't like that method, then at least maybe allow the city employees to... I don't, I don't know what you want to do first, if the council would rather do the manual and then have the city employees read it or city employees first, I just don't know.
Well, we have a template, right?
Yes.
One that we've actually subscribed to now in order to get, so can we just get that? And, and get it into the hands of, as far as I'm concerned, you can make a number of different copies, including one for council members, or any council member that wants one, or everyone. And then maybe a couple copies, one to take to the pool, one to sit in your office, one that Lonnie slash Dale can have their hands on, and while they're sitting there having a coffee break, they can have something really exciting to read.
Take one out to the golf course, too.
There you go. You're a council member, David. You're gonna have Lance, uh, land and read it?
Make him read it.
Okay.
I'm okay with people being a part of the discussion and putting in their input. But then, Dave, the most important thing is that we just get, talk to the right people and get it right.
Yeah.
If people have a problem with it and they want to have their input and they want to talk about it, that's fine, but just because they're involved in the discussion does not mean that that's not.
Absolutely. No matter what, we still have to make it feasible and legitimate. We do want the input from the people. Okay, so...
Do you want to assign committee members now?
That's a template.
We can, if you want.
And that, those people have to do the whole book, or are you dividing into new sections?
No, not to any particular.
Yeah, I think you gotta read it all, because somewhere it goes back to... We need, we need two.
No.
We're gonna need two council members, and then we'll get the, um, city employees, if we can get those. But who, who wants to volunteer on the city council, do this?
So are we doing it council first and then?
No, I think you should just get, I think you should get them all together and have them, have your first meeting and...
That sounds like twelve people figuring about what they...
Well, they're not, they're not gonna be twelve.
They're not gonna be twelve.
Two from this committee, one, two, three, other, five people. Give or take.
Six, no.
And then it'd be on Sam.
Twenty-eight, whatever.
So.
What are your thoughts on how to get this done the right way?
Well... So if you assign a committee, I mean, I, I think a way to do it is see what other municipalities do. I have no problem going to Tom and saying, do you have yours for its playbook? I'm going to my dad's office and saying, do we can?
I think we have several.
I mean, we should have several.
We have a number of them.
I think we compare and contrast those following the first step, which is we go through section by section and say, what in here is just old, doesn't make sense, or doesn't work, or is made? And I think if you do that with a committee, a couple of council members and a couple of the other interested players, there's gonna be enough institutional memory of potential gaps we had when we had personnel issues come up. You know, like, those of you that have been around a while, Dave's been probably the longest from what I understand. Not trying to volunteer you for work, Dave, but you, you should...
Oh, yeah.
But, but you've been around long enough to have seen an awful lot of stuff, and so you might wanna, um, you might wanna be on that. I mean, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with having maybe an ex officio member, somebody that's, you know, been on the council ten years ago, sitting. But I think you gotta go through it section by section. That's all I think you should do. Did that answer your question or not, really?
That's how we do with ordinances. You know, you have your committee together, you go through it chunk by chunk. You adjust what needs to be adjusted, and then finally we do it back.
We're gonna have you read it before we vote on it.
Yeah, yeah, you would go, you know, when city attorney's office can certainly do that for you. The other thing that, this is just, if you want us to do it, I'm willing to go through it section by section for you and say, here's what I, we, Tom Freiberg and I think may need to be updated. I mean, that will not take all that long. Just provides you a letter with, here are the sections we think you may need to update. You know, we can provide you with suggestions, or we can be a part of your committee process.
Okay, so, then we need two people to volunteer. David, are you volunteering for this?
Oh, yes, I'm volunteering.
Okay, all right, I got your name down. We need one more. Even in Melissa, okay. Okay, and then, um, we'll let you guys get together and set a meeting date. And when you wanna do this, and then we'll let this back and get some employees. Who would, who would be doing this, and then we can set a meeting date and get started on it.
Can you on an individual basis let each one of us know who those other members will be?
Yes, I think.
Thank you.
Okay.
And when the meeting is, and I'd like a copy.
How soon can those copies be available?
Yeah.
Um, I can email it out tomorrow.
I'd like a copy of it, even though I'm not on the committee, so we can just look at what, what we're starting with, the new... I think I've already got the old one. I know I do.
How many pages is this?
Forty.
Forty-ish.
Forty-ish? Yeah, I need a copy. Yeah, the golf course needs a copy. Yeah, the guys need a copy, too. Maybe they, maybe they put them on their computer.
An electronic copy for you won't work, Dave? Or, or you gotta add it?
I like to use a pen since I'm kind of on page.
Okay, all right then. Okay, all right, moving on. City website, discussion.
So have we decided if we want to proceed with clearing official city website? I know we have. There is a website associated with the city, but it's not the official city website, is that correct?
Correct.
And that is through the commercial club of the chamber, is that it?
Is it active? I mean, is it updated on occasion and so on? So who does that?
Does the official city website? Can that be done?
Um, I'm assuming the address will be the official web address.
So the URL will be the same?
Yes. Just because it's a nice web address, um, that would be used.
It's the same format as other cities, too.
Yes, it is very nice. It's a city name, SD.
So would the commercial club have an issue with us designating it the official city of Alcester website and including information such as ordinances and minutes and whatever?
No, it's only a tab.
Okay. Does that mean we're just gonna go ahead and do this then?
Do that? Do we need to have a portion to do that, or?
Um, if, what I will do is I will get a form of quote to convert what we currently have over to, um...
What are we paying?
There is one. But the last time I did this, it was like fourteen thousand dollars to convert, and then like five hundred dollars a year. The nice thing about that is it's a template, so it's easily updated by now.
Somebody with some HTML experience can get that.
You don't need to know code to do it.
Nice.
So if you decide, you know what, I don't like this look, I'm just gonna go for this look. You, you as a light person can just go in there and say, I'm gonna change it, and...
That's a light person with a password, right?
Yes, yes.
Everybody's like.
Not just everybody in town confusing.
Can you remember your password, David?
Yeah.
So do we get that information to us? For our next meeting?
Um, moving on then, budget meeting, Melissa, Dave, and Lance, set a meeting date. Now Lance isn't here, so...
Um, July is our month to do budget. I like to have a preliminary meeting before we, before I do much number crunching, just because I want to know what people's thoughts are, like what's working in the budget, what's not, what future plans do we have, whatever. So if we could find a time to do this.
How's the rest of July look for you, Dave?
Uh, Wednesday's not good. Well, this coming Wednesday's not good, and the following Tuesday.
You might want to exclude days already, and then somebody should contact Lance.
Well, we'll just have to let him, let these guys decide on it. Hopefully you can...
So it's sixteenth through the twentieth, is that? Are you, are you talking about the Tuesday that's not worked for you? Is that the seventeenth?
Uh, that, no, that'd be next Tuesday, at the point for the day. That, that's fine. The eighteenth, Tom. The third Wednesday, is that the eighteenth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's out. And the following Tuesday must be the twentieth.
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Other than Wednesday next week, it'd be fine.
So something during that week of the sixteenth would be good. If I can do the sixteenth through the twentieth, okay?
Sixteenth is a Monday, right?
Yes.
Can you do the sixteenth, David?
Yeah.
Okay. If Lance can't, if Lance can't show up, what are we gonna do?
Well...
Cut his salary.
I was gonna say if I, if I have to. I'll shoot for either now morning or afternoon.
It'll matter, um, as long as it's after nine and you're done by...
Early start time, nine, late finishing time.
That's, that's good for me.
Okay.
Sixteenth or twentieth would work.
Okay, so you want Melissa, sixteenth? Nine? And maybe, maybe you guys can agree on making the twentieth an alternate day if Lance can't show up. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Dave, fine.
You want nine o'clock morning start, or what?
Nine's fine.
Okay, we'll go from there. Thank you, David. Reminders and updates. Ladies Golf Tournament, July fourteenth. Session one, the swim lessons, July ninth to the twentieth. Session two, July thirtieth to the August tenth. Fireman's Golf Tournament, July twenty-eighth. Union County Fair. Donkey Races, are you gonna do that?
No, maybe.
August first. Concert on August second, Tractor Pull on August third. Fair Board update?
Well, we have Fair Board next week, but we got our last meeting before the fair. All I can say is encourage people to attend, because we're putting a big gamble out there this year, spending a lot of money. So if it doesn't get attended...
Okay.
That's people's... Tickets are, are they available?
Yep, I have them.
Tickets are available. Seven dollars, ten and under are free to the events. And tickets ahead of time are seven dollars and ten dollars at the gate.
That's for the concert?
Yeah, the concert, and I think that...
And the Donkey Races, yeah.
Yeah. Tractor Pull, I don't know. Probably right around that, too.
I don't have tickets for that. I only have tickets for the Donkey Races and the concert.
So they're making, they're trying to gamble this year, that people say that there's nothing to do at the fair. They look at the schedule, there's a lot to do.
Exactly.
So...
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
HRC?
Well, we've certainly been mowing plenty.
Yeah.
But it's nowhere near as expensive this year, so that's a good thing. We've got a different person mowing and a larger mower, and so it goes quite quickly, and...
Yeah, he's been having to mow about every ten days, I think. That's the way it's been raining, but hopefully it'll slack off a little bit. Okay, wish we could get some more than lots sold, but, yeah.
I went around town with Jeff Jones this, this week, and, um, the people that live with property adjacent to HRC is probably beginning to notice that we're correcting equipment on some... Just so you are aware.
That's a good idea.
We also need to get that signed, but we'll, we'll discuss that offline.
Anyway, okay, um, community building update? Anything more on that? Just, it's just amazing the way, the difference that looks up there since they took all that bushes and stepped out on the north side. You can see the golf course really nice. Any updating on the work most top?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Here's the baby.
I do need, I'm sorry, I made a bad statement to myself on personal stuff, but we do need to discuss and...
If it's an emergency, we can add something.
You, you have it as an agenda item if you've got it, so it was there, if you need to go back in.
Our motions to enter into executive session pursuant to STCL one dash two, twenty-five dash two dash one, present on.
Twenty-five, two, one? Can you come to two, one? Nine fifteen, we want to make... Oh, we need a motion.
Takes a second and a vote.
We need a motion.
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
Melissa made the motion.
Okay. Darrell, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. We're in the executive session, nine fifteen.